...meeting and ask the city clerk to call the vote.
Councilman Campbell.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Willingham.
Present.
Councilman Hadley.
Here.
Councilman Lawrence.
Here.
Councilwoman Smith.
Present.
Councilman Palmer.
Here.
Yeah, I'd like to have an opening prayer and then we'll stand for the pledge of the flag. Let's bow our heads. Longley, thank you for this day that you've given us and the challenges you've placed in our path. We thank you for those, but we've been told to thank you for all things. When as we come around the table to discuss the business of the city, we pray that you would continue to be with us, give us insights and courage and wisdom, and we might make the decisions to be the best for the city of Camilla. Christ's name, I pray. Amen. Our pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You have a series of minutes from our previous two meetings. We had our August regular business meeting and we had it on August the 13th and we also had a call meeting on August the 21st. Do I hear a motion or any corrections?
Make a motion if we have time to minutes. So.
Okay, for both meetings, all in favor, raise your hand. Opposed, like sign. Thank you. Report from, well, first we have a public hearing for proposed electric tariff rates. This will be the second reading tonight, but we'll have a public hearing now and I declare the public meeting open. And if anyone from the audience wants to make a comment, now's the time to do that. But first I'm going to call on the city manager for a brief update on what we're looking at.
Thank you, Mayor. We, what the purpose of the public hearing is to hear comments from the public is, as the mayor pointed out, on proposed electric services tariff rate structure increase. Several months ago, the city had a cost of services study done for our electrical system, which involves looking at all of our current rates and the cost of our, our actual cost of electricity and providing that electricity to our different rate classes. The recommendations were made, was before the city council tonight, as a result of those recommendations and then our consultant, Michael Ivy and myself, and Michael's here to be speaking later, and I sat down and looked at those rates and came up with what we thought would be most appropriate for our, our city of Camilla here. And that's what, what basically what we have in front of the city council. This will be their second reading and they will actually adopt the ordinance tonight in the absence of any comments from the public. And I don't think we have any, Mayor.
Since we do not have any public comments, I'll declare the public hearing closed and we'll move into our business session. First up will be a report from the administrative committee.
Council discussed the proposed rate increase for electric services. After extensive review of the city's fee schedule for various electros, electric services, the city finds inappropriate to revise the rate structure. The public hearing has been properly advertised. The first reading was at August 13, 2012 council meeting. Tonight will be the second reading and adoption of the ordinance for the electric service tariff rate structure. The administrative committee recommends adoption of the ordinance and authorizes the mayor to sign. This is in the form of a motion.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the new rate schedule, electric tariff, electric service tariff rate structure. And we have an ordinance and I'll ask the city attorney to go over that.
This is an ordinance to set the electric service tariff for the city of Camilla. Whereas the city of Camilla has done an extensive review of its fee schedules for various electrical services provided by the city, and whereas it is deemed appropriate for the proper administration of the business of the city of Camilla that the present rate structure be revised. Now therefore, it is ordained that the rate structure is provided in Exhibit A, which is attached to the ordinance. And by this reference is incorporated a labeled City of Camilla Electric Service Tariff Book to come the lawful rate structure for the city of Camilla. This ordinance shall be effective for all utility services provided for billing beginning October 1, 2012. Nothing contained in this ordinance shall prevent this ordinance or any part thereof from being amended from time to time as deemed just and appropriate by the mayor and council of the city of Camilla. All ordinances in conflict herewith or hereby repealed, so ordained, is to be signed by the mayor and attested by the clerk, city clerk. This is the second reading.
Okay. Thanks, sir. Mr. Adams, do you have anyone to speak on behalf of the rate structure change? I believe our consultant is here.
He is, and Michael Ivy is here. I mean, the McLean Engineering, Michael, if you'd just give a brief overview of what we've done here tonight and why we did it.
Well, overall, the revenues as a whole are about hold where we need, but the, there were some changes needed between the different rate classes and, and the different usage classes. The main thing being that in general, there was a, a rate decrease for residential and demand customers and a slight increase for the non-demand customers. And, but on the residential side, although overall, it was a rate decrease, the residential customers that have high summer usage will see a slight increase, so, because that's where a lot of your costs are incurred are in the summer for those high users, so. And, and also on the demand type customers, the idea is that as a customer uses more energy for the same size equipment, same size service, they become more efficient users of that equipment, they have a higher utilization factor, and in recognition of that, the costs go down, that you make better use of your equipment and service needs, that the costs also go down. It's just the same as if you, the more you drive your car, the cheaper it is per mile to drive the car. You want to make sure the rates reflect that, so. And that's the, that's the gist of the changes that we're making.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have any discussion about the rates or the, if any, word from the public or anyone from the council?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I was getting some questions about the, I guess, the senior citizen discount. Could, maybe he elaborate on that so they would understand what I'm saying.
Okay.
Let me get them.
You want to just comment on that?
It's available to anybody over 62 years of age and they just need to call City Hall, call customer service, 336-2209. I'm sorry, 2220. No, that's a night service, anyway. 336-2220.
What he was referring to, I've been asked the same thing, but I noticed it's reflective. It says, customers of age 62 or greater shall have their base charge and minimum monthly bill reduced to $7 per month rather than $12. So it's just.
What it does, Ms. Vivian, the, the ordinance that we're in now and this ordinance also, it's a $5 discount.
$5.
First thing you're saying.
This is what they want to know.
Right, it is.
The $5.
And they do not see it on a line item outside of the bill, it is in with the electric rate all, but it is a $5 savings.
Instead of a $12 basis, a $7.
We don't, we don't, we have no way of knowing their age, so they need to call.
That, yeah, they have, and you do have to call and ask to be placed on, on the list to receive the senior discount.
Existing customers on the old rates would be still.
They continue on, yes.
We have, what do we got now? We have 178, and we have additional.
We had a good many already, oh, and, and we've had quite a few calls since then. We're not requiring them to come in, we're doing it on the phone, and all they need to do is give us the data, bar.
And your, your question is, if you were on, if you had a senior, senior discount now, on the old rate, would you have it on the new rate? And the answer is yes.
And so make sure you don't get a.
It would carry.
Follow your phone calls for the new rate.
As you all said, this is nothing different, we just, almost just one user, right?
That's correct. It became, a lot of people became aware of it once this, this equation was considered by the council, by the local publicity was provided, a lot of people started to ask about it. It's been available since the last rate revision, several years ago.
And I think part of it was the advertising, I didn't have, I did have something posted for years back there when we remodeled, I didn't repost it, but as people became 62, of course, they didn't have anything that they would see when they walked into City Hall to ask about the senior discount.
And we'll be having, we'll be advertising on that.
Right, we do have it on our scroll and we're going to actually get it on in a couple of weeks.
Any other comments or questions? We're ready to call the question. Okay, all in favor of adopting the electric rate tariff rate structure, raise your hand. All opposed, like sign, and it passes. Thank you. Report from the public works committee.
Public Works Committee reports September 10, 2012. Sealed bids for construction of project entitled Water System Improvement, Water Meter Replacements, were received publicly open, read at an open bid held on Thursday, September 6, 2012, at 10:00 a.m. in the council chamber. This project included materials and labor associated with installing new water meters and associated with eight MR equipment for approximately 2,200 existing three-quarter inch water line, water service. Card and suit engineers, I'm sorry, have received review and bids from Match Point Industries of Wilmington, North Carolina, with the lowest bid of $898,638.60. Public Works Committee recommend accepting low bid, authorized the mayor to sign, is in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the ordinance to, to place some 2,200 existing three-quarter inch water service, water lines, under the project title Water System Improvements, Water Meter Replacement. Do we have any discussion on this? Ben, do you want to give us a little overview?
I will, Mayor. There's several informational items attached to the, the cover letter from Chad Griffin, our consulting engineer, going over the, the bids and, and their recommendations. The last page of that has the, the, the actual budget submitted to Jifa when you got the loan from, from the Georgia Environmental Facilities Agency to do this, and you should have something highlighted in yellow on your document, and it shows that we're pretty close there with what the projected cost was and what our actual bid, bid is here. We also give you information, the information of the citizens watching the meeting, we have another two and a half miles of water line that'll be, two inch water lines that'll be exist, replaced with six inch water lines as part of this project, and that'll be bid out later. The, the project scheduled for this, this particular portion of the, of the total project at being a replacement of the existing three-quarter inch water line, meter services, is going to be moving pretty quickly after the, if the council approves this bid. On October the 1st, we're actually going to have a pre-construction meeting and move forward fairly quickly after that to, to install the meters. And the other portion that I mentioned, the actual water lines, will be bid out. Hopefully, they'll be ready to your consideration at the October meeting and we can move this project along quickly. These meters will all be automatic reading meters, they'll have a little antenna, probably about the size of this pen, where our meter readers can ride down the road and actually get the information off the meter. There's a couple of, of really good things that we're going to be able to do that we can't do now in meter reading in that a lot of times meters are read and it may be a week or so before the actual bill goes out or perhaps longer. And talking with the, with Match Point and Chad Griffin and Larry Crummer, our utilities director, this system will allow the meter reader to tell if you have a meter that's running more than it should be, you know, a lot, a lot of our citizens have sprinkler systems and the heads are get, they get knocked off inadvertently either, well, in a number of ways, but you can have a head get knocked off and have a big water bill. And this system will, will alert our meter readers and our people at, at customer service to this problem and they can go ahead and contact the citizen and say, you know, you may have a problem, you need to get someone, whoever, you know, does your maintenance on your system needs to kind of check it. But it's got a lot of, a lot of features like that and we have people to call and ask, ask us to put in, go read the meter again or put a new meter in, and these new meters will be at least 99 to 100% accurate and, and we'll be able to tell just by riding by whether they are operating properly and I just, I will be able to do a lot better job of reading the meters and providing water service to the customer with these new meters.
You mentioned Jifa, Georgia Environmental Facilities Agency. They are, they are our funding source.
That's correct.
We, we have a loan with them.
That's correct.
To be paid back over how many years?
I think it's 20 years.
20 years. Okay. I'm curious, where will the little antenna be placed? Down inside the box or?
It'll be inside the box, but they're, some of them, depending on what's happening, some of the industrial or commercial meters have an antenna that's actually outside, but they kind of, they have a little sturdy antenna and then they have the long one, and the long one, they're inside the box. I mean, they're not everywhere, they can be cut off with a long one, if they like that.
Well, that's, that was my concern. I, I know when I'm, if being things in the way is fair game. I just didn't want to be more than the, the antenna. That, that relieves my mind.
So this give us a more accurate reading on, on what, and we have meters that are not, for, for one reason or another, they, over time, they, they've got, they've got to stop or either they just quit working. We're going to get, you know, we'll start getting those, meters will be read now because they'll be operational. The meters we have are older meters and when they get older, they slow down, they're not as accurate, so we'll, we'll have much more accurate meter readings.
Any other questions? Okay, all in favor of passing the ordinance to, to adopt the ordinance to change out some 2,200 existing water services, raise your hand. All opposed, like sign, and it passes. Thank you. Do you have a guest in the house, Matt?
Yes, we do. I may ask Mrs. Ann Lamb Rice to come and speak about the emergency medical service we have provided to us now with our new service, Mid-Georgia ambulance. And since we just had a good scare from Hurricane Isaac, I ask Ann to also talk about emergency management, which she's, I've been doing for a number of years as well.
I'll just, I'll talk about EMS for a minute. There's still, a lot of you may have already heard me speak a couple of times, some of you many times, that's hurt my little field, but Mid-Georgia ambulance service, I'll just tell you real briefly about them, they've been in operation for 35 years, they're a, a private business, a family-owned business out of Macon, Georgia. They now operate ambulance services in nine different counties, and that's Bill, Chattahoochee, Misscogee or Columbus, Crawford, Macon, Cook, Macon County, Cook County, Pike County, Lamar County, and now Mitchell County. And I understand there's other counties that they are being, they're being, they're contacted by the counties. They don't go hit hunting or anything like that, but they're contacted by them. They are very technology savvy, they're very up on training, they're, they've given us a lot of training opportunities. Y'all seen our new ambulances go by, we're very happy to have new ambulances to go ride in. We have brand-new equipment, brand-new heart monitors, we still have the capability to transmit EKGs to the neighboring hospitals. We also have access now to critical care transport units, neonatal units, we still provide special event coverage at no charge, you know, football games and like the Nat Day Festival, 5K run, anything, we're like that. They're very community-minded, they've already joined the Chamber of Commerce here in Camilla and Pelham, they, they want to be in the community. We still teach CPR classes, we still teach first aid classes, and you will find that it's still us, we just have on different uniforms and riding different colored trucks, but we've been very pleased, the ones of us that are there, about the technology that's available to us. I know more now than I want to know sometimes, but just for an example, if the medics, when we get a call, the medics have a minute and 15 seconds to be in the seat of that truck going on that call if it's an emergency, and we are still dispatched through our local 911. We also have the ability to be dispatched out of Macon and 911 here works closely with CMed, as, as we call it in Macon, and they coordinate our transports, our non-emergency transports out of hospitals, and we also do dialysis patients now. We do a lot of things we didn't do before, and that's been a real good thing for the community because before, well, if you need to go from the nursing home to the doctor's office, well, we could do that, it would cost you, and this way, we're able to file Medicare, Medicaid for that sort of thing because we're filed as a, a non-emergency provider. But they have a minute and 15 seconds to get in the ambulance and get on a trip. If each ambulance is equipped with ABL and GPS, there's a computer screen that lights up when they get in the truck and it gives them out of where they're going, all they do is touch a button, they don't even have to talk on the radio anymore, they touch a button, it lets make a note that we're en route, they touch a button when we get there, they know we're on scene, it calculates our mileage, it calculates where we're going, it does everything. They clock in and out now with a fingerprint, if they clock in five minutes late, I know it, I get an email. If they clock out early, I know it, I get an email. If they stay 30 minutes at the hospital, I know it, I get an email. If they drive over 80 miles an hour, I get an email. They're very safety-conscious, they want to know what they're doing, what they're, you know, how we relate to our patients, they call patients, they put randomly select people, call and say, how was the service you got from EMS this month? And that's worked out really well, it makes us very conscious of what we do. And I'm not saying we didn't treat people well before, but you're very conscious when you know somebody's watching, it's like anything. But we are really excited right now about our recent accreditation that we received from the Commission on the Accreditation of Ambulance Services. And, and I talked to Rotary and Pelham Friday, and I told them, let me put that in perspective for you. We have 152,000 EMS services in the nation. And out of those 100, say 152,000, only 152 ambulance services are accredited, so 1%. We were evaluated in July and we were notified in August that we passed. Not only did we pass, there, there have only been 10 agencies in that 152 that passed with a perfect score and we passed with a perfect score. That says a lot about your people that work here, that says a lot about what Mid-Georgia is trying to do here with the equipment advancements in equipment and technology. They looked at such things as agency management, financial management, how we relate to the patient, our training standards, how we get along with other agencies, how we disaster manage and plan for disasters, how we hire people, just, they look at all kinds of aspects. And I'm really, you know, I've been in EMS now 38 years, I didn't say that, 38 years, and I never thought I would have worked for a private provider, but it's been a real blessing to us. It was an opportunity for the county in order to save money and it's going to save the county money, they now have a fixed amount that they pay to Mid-Georgia to administer the service, but they know what that figure is. There's no surprises that I call up there and say an ambulance blew up or the engine blew, we got to buy new ambulance or something, so it's really, it's kind of laid out where we kind of have no surprises. I will tell you now, when they first came, they're, they're trying to check us all out and see, and they've learned that we needed more ambulances than what we had, you know, when they first come back, their object is, let's cut out the fluff, let's see what we've got, let's see how we run, and they want to save money, they're not going to throw money away, but they want to make things as efficient and as economy-minded as they can. They have found that we do need another ambulance during the day now, so during the day, Monday through Saturday, we operate four ambulances. So basically, there is a 24-hour truck in Camilla at all times, there is a 24-hour truck in Pelham at all times. In Bakersfield, we operate a 16-hour truck that starts at 7:00 in the morning, works till 11:00 at night, Monday through Saturday. If we are busy somewhere else in the county, that baking truck stays on duty. They, that does not mean, because I haven't made that clear, that does not mean at 11:00 we just don't go to Bakersfield anymore, that's not what happens, that ambulance in Pelham or Camilla will get to Bakersfield. Usually, it's the one in Camilla that can go. If we're really busy, the two medics that are on the Bakersfield truck, they stay there until the county is covered again. Since July, we started operating a day truck that runs from 9:00 in the morning until 5:00 in the afternoon or later. Today, it's still on duty because they went out of the county, so they are, it'll probably be 7:00, 7:30 before that truck closes, but it's usually 9:00 to 5:00, but we do have access to that, we also have access to other backup. We still work with the other counties around us like we always have, providing mutual aid and then providing mutual aid to us. We are having a luncheon, I think y'all been invited to that, a luncheon Thursday, I think the email went out today, honoring the medics for the work because when we first came on board with Mid-Georgia, they said, well, we're working on this accreditation, but you guys don't have to worry about that because you're the new kid, they're not going to come down here and, and evaluate y'all, so we really didn't sweat it. Well, on that Friday before the examination on Monday, they called me and said, no, they just called and said they're going to every service that we're a part of and examining, so we had the weekend to get ready and we just really didn't, we just had to make sure all our Ts were crossed and our Is dotted, and they came down and we passed with a, with a full perfect score, so we're real happy. Do you have any questions about EMS before I jump on EMS for just a moment, from my other half?
I have one.
Okay.
Please touch on the persona of loss of employees or whatnot.
Okay.
At once you stated there was going to be cuts before the service ever.
There was going to be cuts, we had to do something. We had 24 people, we had already looked back and you can attest to that, we had already talked, tried to figure out ways to, to cut back and to save money because the county had no money. And we were trying to figure out ways to schedule people without them losing jobs, but layoffs was imminent because Bakersfield Station does not have that many calls at night, hardly any at night. The Bakersfield Station averages 30 calls a month and they're usually between hours of 7:00 and 11:00, and all this is based on statistics. So when they, Mid-Georgia came in, everybody had to take an assessment, myself included, so everybody took assessments, said what messes are on medical skills, it was general attitude, how you perceive things, different things, and just how you looked at life in general, and then there was some medical skills involved, and if you didn't get in the high range, then you were not eligible for rehire. They did provide each one that was not hired, there were five that were not hired, they're all employed somewhere else, but they're, they offered them, they gave them a two-month severance package and paid their insurance for two more months, they didn't have to do that, but they, you know, they knew it was going to be a radical change when they came in here. Everybody else is there, it's the same people that's been there. All the supervisors remain, they were still there, but that's the main thing about that. Anybody else?
So if somebody wanted to schedule like a CPR class or a first aid training?
Just call out there and we'll put it on the calendar. He tries to have at least five in a class, but if he doesn't, that's fine, we've done it as little as one person, one-on-one.
What's the cost of service?
Um, he's been charging $20. Now, if you've got a large group, he cuts the price in it, but we pay what we had to, we had to pay for the cars through the technical school, because you're doing us a favor to take the class, you know, that's helping us be the first responders, and that's another topic. We still work with the first responders closely, the fire departments, we have signed a new We have signed a new agreement between Mid-Georgia and the Fire Association that they'll be our first responders, they use things, we replace them for them. We're, I've applied for a grant to teach first responder class here, and it will provide for 25 students for free. When they complete the class, they get a junk bag and a safety vest and a first responder card, and they can, you know, work with us. But we do still teach first aid and CPR. We also teach a new kind of CPR. If you just want CPR for information, you're not really worried about being a car-toting CPR person, we do a thing called Hand-to-Heart, takes two hours or less, and it's just a general overview and shows you how to do it in video. We let you practice on the mannequins, but you're not required, there's no test, there's nothing like that, it's just information, you know, a lot of people babysitters and that. We still do the cards for babysitters and other healthcare providers, but anybody want things like that? We also do programs in general about safety, 911, when to access 911, how to use it. We do all kinds of programs like that. We do health fairs at the school, career day at the school. So anytime you've got something like that, just call out there and we'll put it on the schedule. We teach pretty regularly, I think last month, they taught 60 people CPR, which is pretty good. Anything else on EMS?
Ann, would you address the railroad issue?
The railroad issue is always an interesting one. I think in the last couple of years, we've been stopped by it maybe three times, and we usually had the first, the fire department goes there, waits on it, say, "If we know where it is, we'll cut on down Binsom Road, or we'll go up the PSC Road and cut across." We usually don't have a problem, but either way, we still have first responders get there before, you know, we do in case. And they can provide, they have oxygen, they can stop bleeding and all that, and they hold on to it till we get there. And that's worked really well for us.
So there's no way that you can get notified of training when it's-
I wish I could, when it-
So the ambulance would be on your side?
Yes, or something, so we would know, if it's going to block it over 30 minutes, if, and that's what I'm saying, we've got one, two, three, four, five, six different ways to get here. If we just know it's blocking Broad, usually, because that's our main, unless we're going out, or Oakland, then we can kind of rearrange ourselves, but they're not, I don't, you know, we haven't had an episode where they've been there 30 minutes or longer that bothered us now. They, they may have done that, and I don't know it, but we haven't had an episode with the ambulance and they've blocked it. We have had them break the train one time. They just, you know, broke it apart where we could get through, but that one went across Oakland, Brentbury, and Broad, that was across the region. But it's not, it's not as bad an issue as I thought it was going to be, too. Anything else on EMS? On EMA, put it on the hat, emergency management. We did do some things, but we really thought Isaac was going to be a maker for us. Turned out not to be a whole lot of anything, which I'm thankful, I'm sorry for everybody that hit, because I don't want to go through it, but it was a good practice drill. We had our meeting with the key players, as we like to call them, the fire police, government officials. We had a meeting that morning, public health and Red Cross in case we had to open shelters and be prepared for that. Did not happen, which is great. Recently, well, last week, just finished our updating our hazard mitigation, not our hazard mitigation, our emergency local operations plan. And that's about a 200, I think it was 220-page document. It is on the agenda to be reviewed and approved at the Commissioners' meeting tomorrow night. And if that gets approved and they sign off on it, you'll see the document next week, and then it'll go to Pellum, South City, and Baketown for approval. Instead of giving you that document, I'll put it on a disk where y'all can access it, but it's got phone numbers, it's got everything in it, what our plans are. Who's the main, primary agency in the emergency support functions? Who's the support agencies in items such as transportation, communication, mass sheltering, recovery efforts? It's a pretty thorough document. So that just got completed, and we'll be working on our, we just finished our hazard mitigation document, we're not updating yet. Probably, I think it got really finally approved in February, so that's where EMA is sitting right now. Any questions about emergency management? Am I forgetting anything?
I just wanted to ask Ann to speak briefly about emergency management, because there's a lot of things that go on behind the scenes that, and they don't need to, you don't need to know as just a citizen who's not involved in emergency management, but I wanted everyone to know that as soon as the National Weather Service starts sending out advisories, Ann boards that to key players, as she was saying, and if it gets to a point where we need to meet to start the plan as a group, how we're going to respond to whatever the event is, we do that, and we have an emergency management plan that we go by, Ann's in charge of that, and various law enforcement, for instance, has a place, fire has a place. We had another bad point come in, the electric departments would get together, working together to try to get, I mean, it's all laid out, it's there, it's worked. We've been tried by, by storm, not by fire, but by storm. And, and I just wanted to really let the council and the citizens know that that is in place, and we are, or, you know, we do work, and a lot of times, it's been my experience, the better prepared we are, the less chance we have of having a storm. But I guess if we ever fail to prepare, we'll probably get hit. That's the one time we'll get hit, but that's not what happened, because we, we have a system down that works pretty well.
I would like to say one more thing, and you reminded me, and I was thinking about this. I do appreciate the efforts of Councilman Willingham and Councilman Hadley in getting the Code Red signup sheets out to a lot of people, and we've got, well, we probably have over 4,000 people in our system now. And Isaac, when Isaac came about, we saw a really good jump in people signing up on their own, and I had several phone calls from people, and I put them in the system. Because if they don't have access to a computer, they can just call out there to the office, and we'll get them and put them there. But that's, that really helped, that one-on-one y'all were doing. Because I look at it once a week, should bring a handful, and we get them in there. But I do appreciate that, to get the word out. And I appreciate you all allowing me to come speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. Appreciate the work you do and your leadership. City Attorney Report.
City Attorney's on vacation, he had to report.
Well done. That's a good report. City Manager Report.
Mayor, I've got just a couple of things. First is CNS has started the post-game run-through, and I hope you see that here. Let me help that up so they get it better. At 11:00 on Friday night, they're having a, it's really a brief schoolboy show, it lasts about 10 minutes. It's geared to the teams that are in Mitchell, Grady, Thomason, and Caulfield County, and, you know, everybody knows this, but when you think about it, we've got Baketown, Westwood, Mitchell County, and Pellum, and sometimes it's hard to get those scores. But you can go to CNS Channel 6 at 11:00 and get, get the scores, and they have about three games that they will highlight each week, the more, well, I guess that depends on who's looking at them, but the games that they think are more significant in the four county area will be highlighted. We're doing, just going to the next item. We're doing some sidewalk repairs around town. You'll see out on US 19, just north of Brentbury, we had some trees that were tearing up the sidewalk there, we took those down a couple of weeks ago, they were DMT right away, and the sidewalk was actually repaired. Today, we're going to do a couple of places on South Party and a few places on North Party are also going to be repaired, so you'll see that going on around town. We have been working, I have been working on one of the goals that we had back in January, a goal-setting meeting was to expand our existing utility system, and I have been working with Equity on extending our gas system out to their poultry houses on Highway 37 East, and they have agreed to do that as of Friday, so that'll be getting started. Hope, if anybody watching the telecast tonight lives along that area and you do not have guests now, if you will contact me by calling 336-2222, and I'm also going to write a letter to all the property owners along the way and give them an opportunity to hook up to our gas line as we're making that extension. I had someone ask a question, that I thought was a good one, and I've had, had a little article in the paper about it, but the question was, "Where are we on our electrical upgrade?" We've had our over-and-under electric contractors working pretty hard in the city for several weeks. They're over in the industrial park now, so they're not as, as visible as they were out on US 19 and some of the areas coming down in Oakland and around, but they're going to be through in a couple, probably by the end of October. And that's the first of four annual events we'll have to get our electrical system. It's in good shape now, but it's going to be in better shape when we finish. And the bulk of that was done this year with the sectioning and capacity upgrades that we did, and that's all we got.
Okay. Under Mayor's announcements, I've got a couple of things I want to bring to your attention, and you may have already, you may already know about it, but the Friends of the Library will be having a fundraiser for the library on September the 21st and 22nd, which is a Friday and a Saturday. It's going to be at the Ag Center, it's going to run on Friday from 8:30 a.m. to 6:30 p.m. That's the 21st, and on Saturday, the 22nd, from 8:30 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. You'll be able to enjoy some chocolate desserts and other things, chocolate-wise, and the idea, the way to raise money is, you make a donation of your choice, and then you can pick out some good books to take home and for your personal use. So you're, in essence, buying some books, but you're paying what you want to pay. The other thing is, we are approaching flu season, flu shot season, and we'd like to urge all of our citizens to think about getting a flu shot. And there are those who are most susceptible to flu, and that's generally the older population. And I was at a Health Department meeting last week, and they were talking about it, and they say the sooner you get a shot, the better it will be, because it'll be for early fall as well, and it will extend into springtime next year. You can, you can get flu shots at a number of places, and they will probably be in the $25 range. You can receive flu shots from doctors' offices or drugstores or the Health Department. And they also talked about the fact that some of our folks' insurance will take care of the flu shot. But if you're, if you're in that susceptible age range, please think about having a flu shot this year. And we often hear complaints from folks about city services and things that just happen in general, but we have a letter here from a fellow from Mount Clemens, Michigan, and I wanted to read this. His name is Ronald Kim, of all people.
Some of my relatives.
Some of your relatives. Now, this was-
Better hear the letter first.
I already know it's good. It was dated August the 14th, which was after our August meeting, so we had to wait until this meeting to read it. He said, "I just wanted to let you know of my visit to your city of Camilla. First, I have never been in the South and had a prejudice belief that those from the South did not like those from the North. I could not have been more wrong. I came to your city via planes to see the bureau that is in the Camilla Post Office Lobby. It was here that, that asking about buying pecans, we were told Uncle Henry's nut ass. From eating lunch to talking with residents and the people in the post office, every, in bold print, every resident was genuinely, genuinely friendly and helpful. As a city member of my city's city commission, I get many complaints, so when you get a compliment, it makes you step back and reflect. Please let this letter be a reflection that all the hard work you and the members of the city have done is recognized. I must have told what seems like 1,000 people of my wonderful visit to Camilla and the South. It will not be my last. Again, hats off to you and those who really have made your city great and changed this Yankees mindset. Please pass this letter on to your fellow council members if possible." It was addressed to me, but I do pass it along to you and to the citizens, citizens of Camilla, because anytime someone says something good about Camilla, it reflects on all of us. And I've said this before, but visitors like this, you may or may not know their business when you're talking to them. So when you're talking to someone about the city, say something good. We have a lot of good things going on in our city, and you never know who you're talking about or talking to. It may be someone who wants to relocate here, but this is, this is a reflection of what they saw, how people reacted to visitors, so it's, it's really puts Camilla in a good light, and I appreciate those folks saying what they did to make this impression of this particular gentleman. And so I want to give this to our City Manager, to pass on to the staff and to employees, and say, "Job, job well done." That's all I have. Does anyone else have any business?
I'd like to thank the city of Camilla for the flowers sent to my grandmother's Helen Jones's funeral this past weekend. It was a true blessing to hear from the city and the support you guys showed behind me. Thank you.
You're welcome. Does anyone from the audience have any comments or any suggestions? Bennett, do we have anything else? Do we have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Motion and second to adjourn all the plates right here, and we are adjourned.